For being here at our public hearing and special meeting, Truth and Taxation. And then following the hearing, we'll go ahead and look to adopt the fiscal budget for 2021, 2022. For those of you that are on the phone, we're going to limit everyone to three minutes. So if you want to address the board, once the presentation is made by Mr. Chavez, then we'll allow you to three minutes. If you, if you're in the audience, you can come up to the podium there, introduce yourselves, and then go ahead, and then you'll have three minutes. The same thing will go to the people that are on the phone. I will allow them to go first because they're on the phone, and then we'll go to those that are interested here. So again, thank you for, for being here, and I will go ahead and call this special meeting to order. Item one is Public Hearing, one, Truth and Taxation Hearing. Mr. Chavez, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to present the Truth and Taxation. In compliance with Arizona Revised Statute 42-17107 and 48254, we are conducting the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, excuse me, to review the impact of the primary and secondary taxes. First and foremost, I wanted to start off with the state impacts that we're going to be looking at for the coming years. The state legislator is reducing the Class One property taxes assessment ratio, which essentially what that does is lower the assessment value ratio on our tax levy amounts from 18% to 16%. That's an estimated impact on the primary tax of about $622,500 over a four-year period, which is about $155,625 estimated annual impact. It also will impact our secondary taxes in the amount of $140,100 over a four-year period or about $35,000 annually. In addition to that state mandated increase, we also have additional increases we're facing to the tune of $127,000 for the Arizona Retirement Plan. That's the multiple retirement plans that we have for our staff. A healthcare insurance increase of $134,500. ID, IT auditor cybersecurity requirements estimated at about $100,000. Liability insurance increase of $25,000, and then an increase in the library contribution of about $27,500. So the Truth and Taxation, we're recommending a primary tax levy amount of $15,510,800, which includes a proposed 15 cents increase on the primary tax. This proposed 15 cents increase represents an additional $15 per year or $125 per month increase on a $100,000 value home. So for a total of a primary tax increase of $15 on a $100,000 value home, that would increase our, our proposed primary tax levy, which our maximum allowable levy according to the Arizona Department of Revenue is $18,533,369. We are requesting the 15 cent increase due to the increase on the overall mandated cost impact, which I previously indicated of, of about $570,000. With the proposed 15 cent increase levy amount, it'll provide $563,142 in revenue for, for the county. Moving on to the secondary tax, with the primary tax being proposed at 15 cents, there's a 20, 20% as well with the secondary tax, and that's a 3 cents increase on the secondary tax for the flood control district. That's about a $3 per year increase or about 20, 25 cents per month on a $100,000 value home. So total for the secondary tax increase would be $3 increase per month, per, per year plus the, the overall assessed values as well. So the annual effect on primary and secondary tax, our proposed 15 cent increase would be the primary tax rate of 4.1315. That would be about a $15 per year increase on a $100,000 value home on the primary tax. The proposed 3 cents on the secondary tax, .8263 cents, that would be about a $3 increase on a $100,000 value home. So primary and secondary tax on our proposed recommendation would be $18 or about a $1.50 per month increase. In summary, the annual effect on the primary tax, this is including the assessed value increase and the proposed tax increase. The primary tax levy increase on a $100,000 value home is $23.81 per year. On the secondary tax, the secondary tax increase on a home value at $100,000 is $4.65. So primary and secondary tax increase overall, that's, this is including assessed value increase plus the proposed 15 cent tax increase is $28.46 on a, on a $100,000 value home or about $2.37 per month. I will entertain the questions, if the board has any questions.
So gentlemen, questions?
I have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Moletta.
No, I just want to thank Mauricio for the hard work that went into this. It's unfortunate that the state, as usual, passes on, and we have to live with it. Reduction of the Class One property tax will affect us, and I think there's a, a credit that goes with that, but as I understand, if, if you don't own a $400,000 house, it doesn't affect you then. Is that?
Yes, sir, we are still.
Am I correct on that?
We are still working with the Assessors Office and the Treasurers Office at determining that impact to our citizens, but that is our initial assessment, is that if you don't own a house valued more than $400,000, that, that credit will not be advantageous to you.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so that move by our state legislature really hurt rural counties, period. And those are all the comments I have at this point. Thank you again.
Thank you. Just briefly, you know, as we review this budget, and I know that this was our tentative budget that we adopted with the increase, because we can always lower the tax amount, but we can't raise it. And I think, you know, staff did the prudent thing in asking for a minimal increase. And I think at the end of the day, when we look at what has occurred over the last two years, that we came out of a severe pandemic that really had a devastation effect on, on everyone, businesses, communities, you know, by the grace of God, we were fortunate that right as the pandemics really started hitting, we had a construction project that poured in a lot of money into our, our revenues was one thing. We had a three, almost a $3 million, a $3 million cares money that was sent from the governor's office when we were building last year's budget that allowed us to balance the budget, that helped us not use any of our, of our savings that we have there. I remember at one time, we had over $18 million, and every year, we were taking $2, $3 million to have a balanced budget, and that's been going down. And so when, when I look at some of these increases, when you're looking to offset some of the costs that you, that you showed up there from $570,000, and the increase brings $563, we're still down $7, $7,000, which is a drop in the bucket considering. The other good thing that happened was is we got some of the American Rescue Plan money, and that's about $9 million, give or take $100,000 here or there among friends. But the guidance still hasn't been completely issued. So at the end of the day, we don't know how much of that we'll be able to use to even offset some, some costs. So we're still waiting for Treasury to identify the uses of that money. So we did get half of the money deposited into our account, and we will be getting the second half sometime in December of 2024, or this year.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, by, by the end of May of next year.
Of May of next year. So, so hopefully, we'll have something clear. You know, nobody likes to have tax increases, and as my colleague mentioned, the state legislature did go ahead and make some, some significant changes. And even when you look at the homeowners' tax rebate, which unless you have a $400,000 home, and until we get more information, is not going to help any, any person that does not have a home that's valued at that or higher. So at the end is, we're the ones that are put in the line of fire that have to make the tough decisions in order to continue to, number one, provide services. You know, whether it's flood control, whether it's sheriffs, whether it's assessing, whether it's public health, whether it's legal, and the list goes on and on, roads, we still have to find a way. And as we look into the future, and, and I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to come out of it a little bit better, not knowing, I think it's always important that you have a little nest egg to see you through the hard times, because this federal money is going to go away, and it's going to go away in, in a few years, and I think 2024 is when we have to spend it by.
That is correct.
And so after 2024, which is a little less than three years, you know, we're going to have to, to see how we're doing financially as well. Finally, when you're dealt cards like this, sometimes the only way to make up the difference is either through furloughs, or it's through layoffs, and God knows that we don't want to lay anybody off, or we don't want to furlough anyone. We have a very good group of employees that work here, they're the ones that make all of us look good. They're out there working hard, especially right now with flood control being out there clearing roads, and, you know, making sure that the public is safe to be able to use those roads. So it's tough. I look forward to hearing the comments from those that, that want to address the board, and, you know, I, I know there, sometimes people don't feel that any excuse is valid to do that, but I think we need to really look and see how we can prepare, not just for this year, but for the next several years that are coming up, so that we're prepared to face any crisis, if there should be another downturn in the economy. I think we need to, to have those funds available so that we're able to weather whatever storm comes before us. So with that, go, go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
A lot of the impacts from the legislative session this year are really going to affect us next year. The legislative session, one of the things that they did was they lowered their contribution to the Arizona Long Term Care Account. Fortunately for counties, there was some federal money that came in, so this year we're not seeing that impact. Next year, we will see that impact. We saw, we talked about the assessment ratio for Class One property, and again, next year and then over the next four years, we're going to see that impact in our budget. They did increase the amount, as Supervisor Mulara talked about, to protect homeowners with homes under a certain dollar amount, because when you lower the, Santa Cruz County is building, has been building its tax base on commercial property and, and all the international trade that's been happening through our community with micaula and produce, and those cold storage and storage warehouses have had a very positive impact on our budget, and we've seen a lot of growth. I think we're talking about 2 million square feet over the last several years. This Class One, this reduction in, in Class One property tax is really going to affect our budget. So when we start talking about trying to balance that, initially, in the, in the, in the conversations that County Supervisors Association was having with the legislators was, you're lowering this tax rate, but you're not protecting the homeowners. So at the very end, they protected some of the homeowners, but not all the homeowners. So these are going to be challenges for us. I think another big ticket item that we're going to see an increase is in IT. And if you look around, you just look at the newspaper every day, and you see all the hacks and all the people that are losing their data and the millions of dollars that they're being held for ransom. This is something that we've been, this board has been paying attention to over the last several years. We've consistently invested in our IT. We're trying to harden the walls so that we don't get infiltrated, and you can tell that if you ask any employee, if you try to open a link on any of our emails, we can never do that. But these are good things. So there's some costs in retirement, some costs in IT, some costs in health insurance, and these are all numbers that, you know, we just, we have no control. These are the numbers that were given, and we have to do it, and especially in the IT. So I'd like to thank, you know, staff for producing, you know, this budget and.
Yeah, I know, and then, of course, the border being closed for nonessential, and then the sales tax revenue that, you know, the city of Nogales depends on, and of course we get shared the sales tax revenue too, so, you know, a lot of things. Hopefully, that border will open soon. We'll know on August 21st, is it, or 27th?
It's always the 21st.
Okay, so August 21st.
I mean, and when you talk about sales tax revenue, we've had, it's been such a year of transition where we've lost our vast majority of our cross-border traffic, and it's really had an impact on a lot of local business owners and even in the majors. But we've had two things in our community that have helped supplement that. One of them was the State Route 189 that my fellow boardmates talked about, and the other one was the, the Supreme Court Wayfair decision, and then the subsequent legislation in, from the state of Arizona to collect all sales tax for local communities at the state level and distribute them. Unfortunately, they're not giving us a breakdown when they send us our tax check of how much is coming from that internet sales, how much is coming from local sales tax. It would certainly be helpful for us, but those two things have really helped lessen the blow to our budget during this, during this crisis, so.
Absolutely good. So at this time, unless you have anything to add, Mr. Moletta, if you unshare your screen there. Mr. McEwen, are you on the line? And I don't know if you heard, we're going to do three minutes. If you're on there, please unmute yourself, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can we raise the volume a little bit? We won't start your time until we can get the volume up. So try again, Stephen.
Thank you. Let me know when you start.
Perfect. So we're going to go ahead and start your three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Gentlemen, I can appreciate all the challenges that you have ahead of you, and these are far real. COVID has been a crisis for us, but I think what also has to be taken into accountability is the challenges that face the citizens of Santa Cruz County. Many have lost their jobs. As you stated, the borders still closed. School closure has caused families who have both parents working to one parent that's working, and severe loss of income, inability to see their families, and more regulations have been put on the county, by the county on our businesses around here with new health code. Our gas prices are up. Inflation is worse than it has been in 2008, and from driving around town, you can see that job opportunities in Santa Cruz County have come to almost a dead stop due to business closures, due to nonessential businesses being closed down. And yet you want to burden the citizens of Santa Cruz County even further. And instead of that, who's even worse hit is those of us that are on fixed incomes. In the paper, you talk about your, your retirement funds and your medical stuff that you're going to get. I, never in my professional life did I not make a contribution towards those type of assets. Perhaps you can get your employees who have had just a sizable increase in their wages just recently, make a contribution. I, I, I search for a reason as to why the people should have to pay for this. Map on what you lost and what you're gaining with this tax doesn't, doesn't jive with me. It seems like it's like a 15 to one, 15 to one ratio, you getting the 15 and losing the one. And your comment about not raising it to the full amount seems like almost a ransom to me. It's like if we don't like the $15 million you're raising, then you'll go ahead and charge us the 18 million. I hardly see justification in that. Economy 101 teaches us that outside money, that would be money coming outside, from outside of Santa Cruz County, is the best money we can have. You have COVID relief monies. I would suggest, gentlemen, that we put our heads together and try to get the economy in our county strong again so that we can see these, these tax dollars recovered without the citizens being paid. Ancient wisdom would say, when you have a crisis, that you wait till the crisis has been over for a while before you make any snap decisions. Vote no on this tax. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Anyone else on the phone wishing to address the board at this time? Raise your hand. I think it's star, star six or star nine? Star nine to raise your hand. We have one that's 459.
That was, so gentleman.
Okay, so anyone else? Going once. Going twice. Good, so we'll move on then to, anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? If you would come up to the podium and then introduce yourselves, you'll have three minutes. Okay, I see no one running up to the podium. So with that, then, we will go ahead and end our public hearing and move into our special meeting. And let me put up my reading glasses on, because everything.
Mr. Chairman, we need to do item number two. Mr. Chavez needs to do the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. So we're still in public hearing, since he had, he had unshared, so go ahead, Mauricio, sorry about that. Thank you. Item two, Presentation of Santa Cruz County Budget for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to go over the final budget that is presented for your consideration. I'll go over the schedules and point out the details and, or summarize the, the schedules, and if you have any particular questions, I'll, I'll be more than glad to entertain individually those.
Great. So go ahead.
Schedule A, this is a summary schedule of estimated revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2021, 2022. The General Fund has budgeted expenditures of $35,822,772. The Special Revenue Fund has budgeted expenditures for $62,432,019. These are mostly federal and state grants and are projections of anticipated funding for the year, including the American Rescue Plan and anticipated COVID-related grants. The Debt Service Fund for fiscal year '22, budget $905,637. For fiscal year '21, the budget was $897,767. This is slight increase due to administrative fees. The Capital Project Funds, we have budgeted for this coming year, $3,173,293. The adopted budget expenditures for FY '21 were $1,165,126. And these are also federal and state grants, and the increase is attributed to multiple airport grants that the county was able to acquire and are moving on forward with, with those improvements for the airport. The Enterprise Fund, the, the budget expenditures are $9,614,470. Adopted expenditures for fiscal year '21 were $7,632,289. This is an increase due to the savings of closure and post-closure costs associated with landfill. So total for all funds, FY '22 budgeted expenditures are $111,948,191. Total for fiscal year '21 was $90,503,482. Again, the difference is going to be the COVID-related funds and federal and state grants. Any questions, Mr. Chairman, board on, on Schedule A?
Gentlemen, any questions on this portion now? And Mauricio, thank you for putting all those little highlights and the arrows. Makes it a lot easier to follow.
Yes, sir.
And I think for the public too, so, great. Please, continue.
Moving on to Schedule B, so Schedule B, that provides the, the proposed tax levy that staff is recommending at $15,510,800. And also, it, it indicates there the maximum allowable of $18,533,369. The second page on Schedule B, our proposed primary tax rate is $4.13, $4.1315, and the proposed secondary tax is .0, .8263 cents. Any questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board on Schedule B?
Gentlemen?
No, sir.
No questions. Please proceed, Mr. Chavez.
Moving on to Schedule C. Schedule C is a summary of fund type of revenues other than property taxes. So Schedule C provides estimated and actual revenues from the General Fund as well as other funds. The General Fund for fiscal year '22, the estimated revenues are $12,982,690. For fiscal year '21, the estimated revenues were $13,112,801, and actual revenues were $17,320,000. The increase in revenues, of course, is what we have discussed before, is the SR189 project. That's really the huge impact. However, in the last four months of, of, that I've noticed, we haven't had any, any, any increase. It's reverted back to the normal rates that we've had before. The following page, Special Revenues Funds, total estimated revenues for fiscal year '22 are estimated at $37,46,478. For fiscal year '21, the estimated revenues were $31,546,773. So overall, for fiscal year '22, estimated revenues are $54,547,544. Any questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
No, please continue.
Schedule D, that's the summary of inter-fund transfers in and out. We're mandated to provide funding for the jail district, the environmental health fund, and animal control, as well as the cash matches on, on federal and state grants, and that's the list of, of the transfers in and out that we, that we have to provide.
Great.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board on Schedule D?
No, sir. Please proceed.
Schedule E, that's the summary by Department of Expenditures with each fund type. So Schedule E provides a breakdown on, of budgeted and actual expenditures by fund type. As we reviewed in Schedule A for fiscal year '22, our budgeted expenditures are at $35,822,772. And then the rest of Schedule E provides a breakdown by fund type, and I can, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions of individual funds if the board desires.
Gentlemen?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Please continue, Mr. Chavez.
Schedule F provides also a Department of Expenditures, and it's a breakdown by department, and I'm, would be more than glad to provide any, any questions regarding the breakdown of, of departmental expenditures.
Okay. All right. Any, any questions? Please, please proceed.
Okay. I would like to also introduce Sonia Jones. She's the HR Director. She's going to be speaking regarding a full-time. She's gonna be speaking regarding a, a full-time equivalent and compensation plan for the county.
Ms. Jones, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, and those on the phone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us today regarding the final budget and our compensation plan, which is a revised salary structure for Santa Cruz County. I did present pretty much the same information at our tentative budget hearing. However, we have pretty much firmed up the numbers here. Happy to report that we do have a decrease in the amount that we had previously reported. So, just to summarize, we did consult, again, with public sector personnel consultants, who we've been working with for the past fifteen to twenty years on this project. So what our revised salary structure we're recommending for implementation, it does consist of more of a grade and step plan. And essentially just took our current structure, put it into this new, the new plan. And just a little brief explanation, it does have twelve steps in each grade with three percent in between each step. And currently, we have it documented that we will have a guaranteed step increase for each of the employees every three years on the employee's anniversary date of their current position. And of course, that's as of now. For continual improvement, we will continually analyze and review, you know, the duration of that period. And if we believe that we can decrease that duration later on, in a couple of years or so, that we see that we can, we can afford that, obviously continually to improve is our, is our goal. So we will continue to do that. This is an estimate, this is an estimated cost to the county for approximately ninety thousand dollars per year. And that's as of today, assuming that one-third of the employees are eligible for their step increase each year. I have some pros listed up there for the salary structure, and that's, of course, cost control, like we've talked about, transparency, providing a visible career path, which helps with retention in our employees. Also consistency in applying compensation policies and practices throughout the county. So for this year's budget, like we said, staff is recommending funding the implementation of this new salary structure, which includes placement to the nearest step for all employees, time and position for all employees, as well as a few reclassifications, position range changes, you know, administrative changes that we needed to do to make sure that everybody fell in line within the structure. And all that was included in your budget, budget packet. Also, the staff is also recommending a three percent cost of living increase on top of this for a grand total of five hundred thousand, eighty-four dollars to the general fund. And this is for all presented recommendations. So that includes the three percent cost of the nearest step, the additional changes, as well as the time and position. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Gentlemen? Anything, Mr. Miletta?
Just one question, is the ninety thousand that, that we adjusted included in the five-hundred-thousand?
The which part, I'm sorry? The ninety thousand?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I thought I heard right. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. Vice Chairman Brecker, any comments?
No comments at this time. Thank you very much.
And, and one other comment, I just want to thank Sonia for her hard work, putting this together. It, it's real critical that we do have a step process for all our employees, and, and it's consistent, because over the years, it's been a little inconsistent. And I know we've been working on it over the years, and, and this really, really kind of solidifies it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Okay, Mr. Chavez, please continue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, moving on to Schedule G. Schedule G will provide the number of full-time equivalent and compensation related to the fund. For the general fund, the full-time equivalent, or FTEs, is two hundred and seventeen. Salaries are at ten million, five hundred, eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty, plus related expenses of five million, seven hundred, sixty-nine thousand, four seventy. Total compensation for fiscal year 22, sixteen million, three hundred, fifty-five, nine hundred and fifty dollars. The rest of Schedule G provides a cost associated with other departments. I'll be more than glad to answer any other questions regarding Schedule G.
Gentlemen? Great. Please, continue, Mr. Chavez.
The, the levy limit worksheet information, that's provided by the Arizona Department of Revenue, and I addressed that in the Truth and Taxation hearing as well. Their maximum allowable levy limit is eighteen million, five hundred, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine.
Questions?
Mr. Chavez, next here, can we get this in a QuickBooks format?
I'll make a note of that, sir. Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if not, then, thank you. Now we can move on to item two, right? I mean, agenda. Are we done?
Do you have any questions from the, from the audience?
Any questions? I don't know that that's what you do, the Truth and Taxation, but if there's anyone wanting to comment on what was presented, I'll go ahead and take your comments now. If not, we'll move on to the agenda item. Okay. Then we'll move on to our agenda. Item one, discussion, possible action, approval of resolution number 2021-09, the Santa Cruz County budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Who's gonna handle that? You or Mauricio? Or Jennifer? Comments?
This is just the resolution to adopt the budget for fiscal year 21, 22. Currently, it stands as presented by staff, so this is the board's.
So we have the opportunity here if we want to modify it?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is for the budget, right?
This is for the budget, yes, sir. Which will, if, if you want to adjust the tax rate, this is the time to talk about it, because you'll want to adopt the budget, the resolution as presented by staff with, either as presented by staff or with a different tax rate. And then we would make the change on the budget and the tax rates if there are any changes to be made.
Okay, good. So I'll go ahead and open it up then. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead. Supervisor Miletta.
We, we've seen very challenging times, and... I guess my mic's out of battery. As I said, we've, we've seen very challenging times, and I, I first and foremost want to thank you, your staff, our health department, who's sitting here in this room. You guys have been amazing. Mariposa Community Health has been a great partner. It, it's, it's amazing how when you have a great partner, great things happen. It's been very challenging. We've heard, we, we have lost a lot of jobs, but some jobs have continued to flourish. Our, our construction is doing great, and, and hopefully, it will continue to do great. It's good to see our community developing and, and getting more people to move to our area. We have our challenges. We have added expenses, some that we did not ask for, that our state shoved down our throat, which happens fairly frequently. I, I want to thank our legislators, because they did go up to bat for us. I know Daniel, all, all our legislators did go up to bat, but they, when all was said and done, they, they were defeated. We have to take care of our employees. It, it's real critical. You want retention, you want a good workforce, you want to provide a good service, that's something really critical. While we're asking for fifteen cents, I, I don't know if I'm personally comfortable with fifteen cents at this point in time. My question to you guys is, are we okay with eight cents? Can we? Because I, I, I know we have funds that are up in limbo right now, where we don't know if we're gonna be able to spend or not, or use. There's a lot of questions up in the air. So, so my question to you, Mauricio and Jennifer, is will eight cents work?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miletta, Mr. Chavez and I work at the discretion of the board, so whatever the board instructs us to do, we will make the appropriate changes at your desire.
Okay, great.
So hopefully, that answered your question.
Yeah. Before we make a motion, we'll, we'll have everyone kind of, we'll go with the Vice Chairman next. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This has been a challenge, as we all know, a very challenging year. And there have been some people that are doing a lot better than they did the prior year. But there are many, there are many that, and many businesses that are really challenged right now, just to keep their doors open and just make the payments that they need to make. And I'm talking household payments, and I'm talking business payments. We've talked about raising salaries for employees. This is something that has not been done since 2017. If you look at social security, cost of living increases, it compounded, the compounded increase that people in social security have received since 2017 is seven point nine-one-nine percent. I believe that the calculations that we're proposing right now with the call of the step and are less than, are probably around around six percent. Is that correct? Yeah.
That is correct.
So I think that, I think that number is a, is a pretty solid number. I think it's a good step for our employees. And we need, we need, we have not increased the number of employees in this organization from the general fund. We're, since 2008, 2009, we're still sitting at two hundred and seventeen general fund positions for all those years. So, I do hear what Supervisor Miletta is saying, I'm actually a little bit more conservative. We've been able, you know, because of some of the funding that's come in, and we've been able to cover some of our costs, we've been able to build a little bit money in our, in our rainy day fund, and I think it's raining. And my proposal would be a five cent increase. I also caution everybody that next year is gonna be the year that the, gonna impact, the impacts from the state legislature this year are really gonna hit us, so... But I think for this year, I would be more comfortable with a five cent increase.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, that's right. So I'm in the middle. I'm stuck in the middle with you guys. Look, at, at the end of the day, we have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in added costs to our budget. Even if we were to levy the fifteen cents, it would only raise five hundred and sixty-three dollars and high, five sixty-three, one forty-two. And while I have no issue supporting neither one of my, my colleagues on, on their request, those costs are gonna continue to rise, whether it's the health or whether it's the retirement. As far as retirement concerned, and there was, there was a, a good comment made under the Truth and Taxation, a lot of the people that are on some of these retirements are capped at what they can contribute. And correct me if I'm wrong, and I think law enforcement is capped, and we at the county have to make up the difference. So we can't pass those costs on to, to the employee. Those, those are costs that are eaten by us through our general fund. As far as the insurance is concerned, we've tried to be very generous, helping our employees, because we, we realize the cost of, of, of healthcare, and we've, we've absorbed some of those costs, and we continue to absorb them, because we believe that it's a good benefit for our employees. I know there are some employees that, that have their families on there, and they pay the extra funds that are necessary for their families, and that, and that, to me, is, is a great benefit. You know, we look at everything that's occurring, and I know that because of the Truth and Taxation mandates that we say what we could levy, it's not an anthem for us to be proud of and say, we're using this to raise taxes. The only thing that we're doing is we're trying to find a, a, I guess, a plateau or a level to try to offset some of the added costs that we have. And I would hate for us to be caught in a place where, three years down the line, that either we have to raise it by a dollar, or we have to cut personnel. And I, you know, I just, I'm very cautious, and, and I know we got some funds this year from the federal government to offset some of those costs, especially with the CARES Fund. But the American Rescue Plan is not as, I don't think, is, is open as we would like for it yet. So, well, yeah, we may have the money, but maybe we can't use it to offset any other costs. I know one of the things that's in there is for broadband. I think broadband is going to be the next big challenge of infrastructure in our community. So what do we do? Do we take that money? Unfortunately, we can't open or operate an internet company and sell internet to the residents. It's, it's not allowed. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of challenges. At the end of the day, I understand that our community has gone through a lot. I mean, I would, at this point, split the difference and make it seven cents. That way, it's not quite five cents, it's not quite eight, but seven cents. It would still not be where we would need it, but I think it's something that, you know, if we could do seven point five, it would be even better, but, but...
Six point five would be better.
Well...
That's splitting the difference.
But, but, but that's splitting hairs. But, you know, a, at the end of the day, I, we are a, a board of three, and we have always been very responsible with the way that we levy taxes, the way we, we spend the taxpayer dollar, the way we deliver services, because I think we want to be good public servants. And that's what our community elected us to do. And, you know, sometimes it, it's hard, I think, when, when we talk about budgets, we talk about taxes, it's probably the hardest thing to do, especially considering that there are many people that have lost their jobs, or there are two family members working to try to make ends meet. We understand that, and we want to be compassionate to their needs. And when you look at what's happening at downtown Nogales, it's a ghost town. It is sad to go down there to see that that area was once a very vibrant commercial center that now is, is kind of going towards a, a ghost town. And, and that's not good for our community. It's not good for, for our community members, residents, for our business owners, it's not. So, gentlemen, you know, I don't want to get up here and do a sermon, but I think that if we're willing to do that, I will, either one, I will support, but those are my two cents, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, so... Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Move to approve the seven cents.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. So we'll go ahead and split the difference. It won't be fifteen, but it'll be seven. So there's a motion to levy a seven cent tax increase. Under discussion, go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should move to approve the Resolution 2021-09, and direct staff to adjust the tax increase at seven cents, and adjust the budget accordingly. I believe that will take care of it.
Sounds like a good motion.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Miletta, would you rephrase your? I will withdraw my second, and if you can restate your motion.
And if I could, before you restate it, I'm sorry, Supervisor Miletta.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
So the primary, the secondary tax is a direct relation of the primary tax. It's twenty cent, twenty percent. So then it, we, you would also direct staff to accordingly adjust the flood control secondary tax.
Okay, primary and secondary.
Yes, sir. So, so a primary of seven.
Okay. Okay, move to approve Resolution Number 2021-09, adopting the Santa Cruz County budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and ask staff to adjust primary and secondary to a seven cent levy, right?
So the primary will be a seven cent levy, and then adjust the secondary accordingly?
At twenty percent of what the...
Primary at seven, seven cents, and, and adjust... Primary at seven, seven cents, and, and adjust secondary accordingly.
Right. And I'll second that. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item number two is discussion, possible action, adoption of fiscal year 2021-2022 tax rates for jurisdictions within Santa Cruz County. What that is, is the school districts, the fire districts, as you know, and we've had many residents approach us about making changes to them. We cannot do that. Those are individual boards that are elected, and they're the ones that allow to set the tax rates for the need of the special district or school board or fire district that it is. The only thing that this board is able to do is adopt them. And then they become part of when the tax bills go out and, and what people pay for the school district or the fire district in, in their, in their neighborhood. So, gentlemen, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to adopt the proposed tax rates. Tax rates for the schools and fire districts.
The jurisdictions within Santa Cruz County. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Yes.
Sorry, sorry. So, on the tax rates that you have before you, on the Santa Cruz County and the flood control, it does include the 15 cents. So, again, we need the, the same, a similar type motion. So, you adopt as presented with the change to the Santa Cruz County primary to seven cents and the secondary accordingly for Santa Cruz County.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
So, no, 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 that's fine. That, that, that's right. And I, anyway, so just go ahead and, and rephrase the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Santa Cruz County school district tax rates and the, adjust the flood control tax rate to be compensatory with a new property.
And it's also the fire districts too, because there's fire districts in there as well. So, I will go ahead and, and second that. So, all special jurisdictions will be at the tax rate as presented. The county tax rate will be adjusted to reflect the seven cents. And then the secondary will reflect accordingly 20%. So, we're good? Okay. So, at this time, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and the meeting stands adjourned.